Good afternoon, we're ready to begin. I welcome everyone to the current chambers. I apologize, the city council chambers is being renovated at this time. So the next few work sessions will be here at the current room. Good evening colleagues and audience members. My name is Ed Rice Singer. I am the chairman of the Land Use and Transportation Committee for the Baltimore City Council. One of my ground rules is please turn off your cell phones and androids to give courtesy and respect to those who are going to testify. We are here this evening to conduct our 11th work session on city council bill 12 dash zero one five two, Transform Baltimore Zoning. During our 10th work session held on Thursday, April 24th, we completed page 105 through page 112. Well, today we will start on line one of page 113 and work on as much as we can during today's session in two hours. We are only going to have a two hour work session. The Land Use and Transportation Committee intends to work progressively through the bill by reviewing it page by page, starting with Title One and continuing through the bill in the order that is written. City agencies and the public will be asked to participate by raising their questions or comments as the committee is discussing the page. They have a comment or if you have a question regarding the article. I encourage everyone to visit the city council website. It's www.baltimorecitycouncil.com. In order to stay updated with the section of that bill, the Land Use and Transportation Committee is working on it each work session. In addition to the currently scheduled work sessions, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will likely hold additional hearings and work sessions. Information about these will be distributed to the public as soon as dates, times, and topics are selected. Again, please check the Baltimore City Council website for the most up-to-date information. If you are unable to attend the scheduled work session and you wish to provide written comments and/or amendments, please mail it to the Office of Council Services. Attention to Antoine Banks, who's to my left, at 100 North Hopkyn Street, 21202. Okay, we are, today we are joined by Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, to my left. To my immediate right is Councilman Jim Craft, who is the vice chair of the committee. We're also joined by Angela Gibson, who's in the audience representing Mayor Stephanie Wallace Blake. We're also joined, to my left is Kara Kuntz, who is here representing the president of the city council, Bernard Jack Young. The committee's attorney, Mr. John Willis, is to my left. We have the table set up, to my left or to my right, for agency department representatives if they wish to sit here. And at this, and we are joined by two of my colleagues entering the current room is Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton, to my left, and coming toward me is the dean and my mentor of the city council, Councilwoman Ricky Spector. We are, right now we are on page 113. Can you hear me clearly? Okay. We are on page 113 and it's Title VI, zoning districts, map profiles, subtitle one, purpose of title. And it goes from one down to 34. So if you would cruise through this, read this, if anyone has any amendments to page 113, bring them forward, the agencies here or my colleagues. In the audience, we have a microphone set up. If you have amendments, just come to the microphone. Yes, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
I was waiting to see if you all had something, just, um...
Can you?
Sorry, Joan Floyd, can you hear?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, just on subtitle two, and which is on page 113. And you have a copy of this, I think you have, I submitted it. Just two...
Okay, what line is you saying?
Well, it's the problem, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't line up with a line, that's the problem.
What?
It's, it doesn't correlate with a line.
Well, is this an, this is an amendment, right? Is this an amendment?
I'm, I'm, yes, I'm asked, but I can't tell you what line it is because I'm saying that I believe that the, throughout this you have overlay districts combined with base districts, and the suggestion is, there are two, two parts to this. One is that you separate the overlay districts from the base districts, and then that you add some kind of an explanation or a definition of what an overlay district is, which I didn't see in the definition section. And the suggestion is that you, you make it clear that an overlay district is different from a base district, that it's a district that can be added or amended based on its own criteria and not based on the change or mistake. That's... I mean, I think...
Wait, wait. We'll need to speak to the microphone, do you understand what she's saying?
I understand what she's saying. I don't know what I'm doing, but I think it's the plus. I definitely think it's what Joan was saying, so that we don't have to go through the learning of that process to either remove or add to it. We're doing the process of applying, taking away overlays. So, yeah, so that there should be... So overlays are just that. For example, in my district, I'm recommending certain overlays be removed as part of the specific...
Overlay district.
Okay. And so, there is a, the question is, how does one, after this code's adopted, do that? How do you remove a overlay or add an overlay? And so, we would have to figure that out. But also, we, she's saying, because it's an overlay, make it clear that you don't have to go through the, we made a mistake or the community has changed, it's a part of the finding of fact to add one.
Okay.
Or remove one, right?
And just, right, just to clarify, it seems like this is a time to make a distinction between a base district and an overlay district. I mean, that's fundamentally what I see missing right now from the current draft.
I think it's very insightful, I really do.
Okay, would it give her...
I think we also understand and would have no objection, whether it's in the definition or here, to make it clear the overlay. It is certainly the intent, and I do think it's clear, that any change in an overlay is still an ordinance process. An overlay doesn't, doesn't come or go without going through a city council, a council process. But it is, just for the council's benefit, it is drafted so that an overlay does not, there is still a base zone in addition to the overlay. So it has the, in most cases, the overlay is a modification of a base zone. Rowhouse mixed-use overlay is for primarily residential zones that have certain characteristics that are slightly commercial, but we did not feel that it was appropriate to zone commercial because that would change the character of the area too dramatically. So, that just as an example. So there, so it is a, there is still a base zone, and we have no objection, working with the council staff to, to clarify that language.
Okay. Thank you.
So, does somebody have a...
Yeah, the planning department will...
Yeah. For the record, we have, can I speak to you? Yeah. I've been working with council president's staff, Kara Kuntz, and we are going to be starting to, starting this Friday, scheduled some work sessions where we will take all the notes that have been made and put it together in something comprehensible.
So, my question to get clarity for myself and everyone else, Ms. Floyd's issues, that's an amendment? Is that an amendment you're coming with?
I think it would, my guess is it would be a new definition, and it might be a slight reorganization or reordering of some elements.
Okay, so we're going to work on that.
And we're, I think we understand it and can work on that.
Okay, and then, okay.
As with the other amendments.
I think Mr. Will...
Mr. Will, should I?
Note that it's probably a new definition on page 46, probably would be appropriate. New definition on page 46, which is where the O's are.
Right, right now. I think when you speak into the microphone, you may have to...
Overlay definition.
Right. Page 46 is where it would be located.
That's how I, that's how I've noted it, so.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, now we are on page 114, starting at line one, six dash two oh five, commercial Down to line 31.
Yeah, my friend, I have a proposed amendment on line...
Okay, do we have them? Do we have those?
Yes, sir, it's in your sheets. I would, excuse me, yeah. I'm just recommending that we eliminate IH Inclusionary Housing Overlay Zoning District. I mean, basically, the whole city is covered by inclusionary housing, such as it is. I don't understand, and I haven't seen any overlay maps of, of, how, of inclusionary housing districts, so I, it sounds, well, it sounds restrictive of something that's citywide. I don't know what it is.
You wouldn't explain that, you had to... Technically, we can only have three or four microphones because of this.
Yes, it's, it's, the Inclusionary Housing Overlay District is in Title 12, subtitle eight, and it is exactly replicating what is in the current code. We did not change that language. This is something the council created, I want to say, five years ago, some, eight years ago? Okay. And there were some modifications recently. Page 188, and, and you are correct, it's not a mapped item. It is citywide, so maybe it doesn't need to be called an overlay district, but this is from the current code. This is not a new item.
So, we really don't need it since it's already there, right?
Well, but you have to, if you want to continue it from...
You've got to keep it, even though it's...
You've got to keep it somewhere.
What?
The, the language on what Title VI is referring to, it's sort of a table contents, is referring to Title 12, subtitle eight. Subtitle eight in its entirety, the bottom of page 188, is in our current code today. If the council chooses to maintain what they have today, we're simply carrying it over.
So, so let me just, so let me ask this. If we were to pass the councilwoman's amendment, and that is to delete line 28, whatever that is, IH Inclusionary Housing Overlay Zoning District, then we would also be deleting on page 188, lines 20 to 32?
Correct. And, and that, page 188, lines 20 to 32, is from the current code today, and it is the authority under which this council has operated. Again, you know, that's, this was legislation you created, and we simply carried it over.
Here.
Yeah. The inclusionary housing law is one thing. So this is the inclusionary housing laws, this is not the law itself, which is volumes long. This is a reference to it. I'm not trying to be difficult, I don't get it. Like, overlay says to me, we take a piece of property or a block or something, and we put on top of it, without changing the base, a special designation. Now, the only thing you could overlay physically from inclusionary housing would be developments of 30 or more that have benefited from some government money. Developments of 30 or more that have benefited from some kind of land use, major land use change. And so are you, so are we overlaying certain structures?
The long volume of legislation that you refer to is correct. There is one piece of it that is tied to zoning, and that's what's on page 188, and that is all properties that are subject of significant rezoning, as defined, for whatever purpose would be, have this I. That's how the inclusionary housing was created. It has a provision, it's not just the 30 units, it's also where there was a major rezoning.
And this would delete the whole provision if we did this?
Right, so if you delete that, you would be deleting the part that speaks to if someone makes a major zoning change. Right, right now what it says is, if you make a major zoning change, you are automatically subject to inclusionary housing.
And so, in the list of thousands of... In the list of thousands of properties in Baltimore City, do your maps, as drafted, show this I-dash designation? Do the maps reflect this?
Uh, no, the, the maps don't reflect it today, but what... If you make that zoning change, you would get that designation and therefore be subject to that law.
So nobody's done it yet, is that what you're saying? So therefore, nobody's going to, nobody's on the map?
I don't know, under the current code, whether it has, I'd have to defer to housing, if under the current code, any of the, the rezonings have kicked in this provision, but what we did is just transfer it over. If there's a, I mean, again, this was not a piece of our creation.
I don't care, I don't care, it's just, it's not, it's, it doesn't make sense, but fine.
I, yeah, I, let me ask you, as an example, so if we created a PUD, now, PUD is a, you know, it's a separate entity, but if we were to create a PUD, and then in that PUD, we were to create, as part of that zoning, we were to allow them to build housing, because we had done a zoning change, even if there were more units, it would also qualify both on the size of the number of units, and on the fact that we had made a zoning change, it would qualify under this for inclusionary housing, because there had been a zoning change in order to do it. That is, we had created the PUD in order to do it. So that technically, this IH overlay would go over the PUD? Am I, is my thought process correct?
Yes, it's essentially a, as the bill was drafted, when the council created this inclusionary housing authority, the concept was that it was tied to both units and...
No, I understand that, but I'm just using my, yeah, just...
All this does is denote it, yes.
No, I understand, but my example, does that, that, that would apply in that circumstance?
Yes.
Right? So that, or in, in any instance where we would in fact grant zoning in order for someone to build housing, right?
I'd have to, it's defined in the city code, which is the, the larger legislation that Councilwoman Clark was referring to, and I believe that it has specific, I don't have it in front of me, it's not just any zoning change that triggers inclusionary housing, it's only when you're changing from industrial, I believe, to, it's not any zoning change.
Okay, but there is, when you, when you do that specific zoning change under the housing law...
Under the inclusionary housing law.
Under the inclusionary housing law, and that property is now rezoned, whatever that zone is, right? There also comes into play the inclusionary housing overlay on that because it, because it's subject to that requirement.
It's essentially a way of recording that requirement.
Okay, all right.
Through the property. So, for example, all right, in my district, the Ro Tunda, it hasn't changed its zoning, it's got the same zoning it always had. Correct.
But it's going to build where there are no apartments, it's going to build 385 apartments.
Correct.
Now, does that get an, they're not a PUD.
No, and that wouldn't get the I. That, that determination of whether that project...
They're eligible.
Is subject to inclusionary housing law is not because of change in zoning, but because of number of units.
All right, so that, they get an IH.
No, because it's not, it's not subject to inclusionary housing requirements because of a change in zoning, it's subject to inclusionary housing requirements because of the number of units they're building, so it's not in the zoning code.
So this is only when, when the zoning got changed, and then...
There was no zoning change on that property.
No, 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 I know that, so you're saying, what it's saying is, if you change from an industrial to a residential zoning, so you could build 385 units, then the map should reflect IH dash R7.
Exactly.
Even, even if they don't participate in the long run in inclusionary housing, because the city doesn't have the money to let them.
Right, they are still subject to the Article 13 to be, the, it's a, it's a, it's a recordation of it, essentially. Uh, Housing Department.
Okay, good. You can lay, you can lay it on a table till we get to it. Okay, thank you. We're still on page 114, with regards to the districts. What about six, six dash three oh one, maps and profiles, part of code, that's from 34 to 41. Any amendments to that?
We have page 115.
Planning?
Yeah, we just have 115.
115, okay. That, that goes into 115. Okay, in fact, 114 into 115. Any amendments to 115?
Yes, on line six, page 115, it should read Department of General Services, not Department of Public Works.
Okay. Well, that hasn't, we haven't passed that door yet, have we? But it's introduced, okay, I got it.
By the time this goes through, it might be Department of Transportation.
Anyone else showing page 115? Okay, Mary Pat Clark, we are now on page 116.
Yes, sir.
One through 30. I see you have a amendment. Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Page 116, line 26.
Can I ask a favor, when, with all the work that we're doing, can we ask them to throw in a few extra microphones for this room?
Is there, is there a technical issue with that?
I don't mean this moment, but, for here. I mean, really? Because there's, you can't hear anything without microphones in this room. All right, yes, I just wanted to take out of, this is under, the following uses are allowed in all zoning districts unless otherwise specifically provided in this code. I just, I know that telephone booths and pedestals are almost a thing of the total past. The thing it sits on, you know, like, so it's as high as you are, yeah, well, it wouldn't be that high, but, as high as I am.
Tall, as tall as you?
Yeah. So, basically, there was a time when I served in this council when all the drug deals were done, done on, on payphones. This was a long time ago, before everybody had a cell or whatever they, everything. But still, there are some, and they, they are either, they can be a problem. And so I just wanted to, just get them out of being permitted everywhere, and make them There are some places where they still are used and can be, and then everybody gathers there, and then, everything.
Yeah, okay.
If they need to, they need to all together at this point.
Right, it's almost, yeah, a dinosaur.
Councilman Craft, Councilman Craft, you have a question?
Mr. Chair, I understand Councilwoman Clark's position, but I just wanted to point out that on many of our institutions, like the college campuses and hospital campuses, they have phone, security phones that go directly to a security desk that are located around. Now, this may not be the appropriate place, but, and planning may want to think about whether they would otherwise be covered, but emergency phones are all over Hopkins and hospital areas and other institutional government buildings. They're not phones for commercial use, they're phones for internal use, so maybe you can still delete this, but I think you should be aware of that so it doesn't come up when they're developing those properties for their institutional purposes.
I, um...
Loyola, there's, there's a whole bunch.
I'm making them, I'm proposing that they be conditional use with the board. If they're in, you know, if they're on a college campus, why would another whole situation?
Just be aware of those other types of things that are similar, that are not commercial, but, public, or some, some word.
I'm talking about public phones before someone just rips the cord off, in that brief moment of life when they're operational. I'm talking about public phones.
One...
One, I think I understand the security phones on the campuses in the, in Title 12, in the hospital and educational overlays, whether it's needed or not, we could say in that definition includes security phone systems as permitted on campuses. And I think that would address what you're getting at.
If I understand-
I think they're not as permitted without consideration.
Oh, okay.
Alright, I have a question. I just need a definition. On page 116, line one, what is a pierhead line? Can you tell me?
That's in the water, and it's a, it's a property line related to piers, essentially. Riparian rights, so, so it varies, yeah.
So, is it where a pier actually ends? Is it where a pier should end? If a pier has collapsed and the, and the pilings are still there, is the pier, is the pierhead where the pilings end, even though there's no pier anymore?
Yes, it can be.
It can be, or it is?
The pierhead line is a property line, essentially. It's a lot line.
Okay, I'm just-
It's a type of lot line.
Okay, so if there is no pier there any longer-
It can still-
But a person has a map-
Right.
Or something that shows a pierhead line, then that defines their riparian right?
Yes.
Okay. Where, is there a, for example, in my district, right, where we have a lot of waterfront, is there a map that shows the pierhead lines and the ownership for the entire waterfront, say, starting at north shore?
The property lines, yes, they're shown on the, the city's mapping system, the real property maps and the, it's a GIS layer in the city's system that shows those property lines. And you'll see, it is, it's somewhat irregular and not necessarily a logical line, but it's there as part of the property.
Then how come we have trouble finding out who's responsible for maintaining the promenade?
Well, that's actually a separate issue because that's not necessarily tied to the property, but I'm not sure that we-
Well, if you look at the-
We have pretty clear records on that.
If you have piers, well, that's not what we're told. If you have piers, if you look at piers, wharves, and bulkheads, if you look at that section of the code, it says whoever owns the pier or the bulkhead is responsible for the adjoining, you know, repair of that area, right? I can't remember the exact wording. The pier or the wharf or the bulkhead, that owner is responsible for that repair, maintenance, everything else. When we go and try to find out who owns this, the pier or the wharf or whatever, and the promenade as it adjoins that, because in many cases it just touches right up to that, we have sections where we can't find out who owns it, and we've tried to find out who owns it.
I, I'm not familiar with this attempt. Maybe we should do this offline, but we have records in our office of all the easements for the waterfront promenades on a property by property basis for the entire-
So the, the owner of the easement is the person who's responsible for maintaining it in all circumstances?
Well, the easements are individual, and I don't think there are any exceptions, but any exceptions would be in those easement languages as to maintenance responsibilities.
Okay. Alright, and the ownership of the pierhead lines, you also have all of that?
That's on real property records.
You have it.
I don't have it.
Who, what department has it?
Personally, it's owned by General Services.
Is it, is it General Services?
They're the keeper of property records, yes.
I know they're the keeper of the flame.
We all share the same electronic database, so it, there's not unique information.
May I ask Ms. Collins? She is the knower of all things General Services. That's it. Now, the reason I want to know this is because it's, it's gonna, it's in this code, it's gonna be in this code, and people are gonna ask us to interpret that when they call us, particularly in my district where we have the water. And I need to know, like, when somebody says, "How does this affect, what is a pierhead line?" I need to be able to go find out and nail down who is. So, do you have, not you personally, does General Services have this information?
I'm Ms. Collins, representing Public Works and General Services here today. Yes, as, as being explained by Miss Feinberg, that should be shown on the property plaque. So any property that's abutting a, a water area, that property should be defined, whether it encompasses some distance into the water body, or whether it stops at the shoreline, that should be defined within that property definition, that property line on the map.
So, again, not to take this too long here, but, but I really want to understand this, if I, if I may. So if you have a development, say like the Anchorage Town Homes, where you have townhouses all along the water, and they get titled to their townhouse, that, it could be similar to a row house, their, their property could actually extend into the water, or the, the homeowners association could actually own the water portion, and it could be, the water could be common, common ground or common property. It would depend on how in the condominium regime, or the cooperative, or however it's structured, that was put together?
Yes, or it could stop at the bulkhead, depending on how that particular property-
How it was acquired-
Yes.
How it was acquired originally?
Yes.
Okay. But you, some, you would have that record, or, who has that record?
That's under Property Locations, in the Department of General Services currently.
Okay, alright, thank you.
We're still on page 116. Ms. Floyd?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, on this subtitle four, which was the section that Councilwoman Clark was, was talking about, the exempt essential services. When I was looking over this, it seemed to me that this, this section seems out of place. It doesn't seem to really fit with this, with this, the other parts of the section. And then I was wondering whether, in fact, since we're talking about allowed uses, don't we already have a mechanism for, don't we have a table where we say, if this use is permitted, or if this use is conditional? And it's either allowed as a permitted use, or it's allowed as a conditional use. So wouldn't that be the way to take this information and put it in a place where everyone could, could see it easily? And then the decisions could be made. Councilwoman Clark suggested for number five, I guess that's line 26, that it be a conditional use. My suggestion is we also have on lines 27 and 28, items which may, may need to be regulated as to the location within a district. And a particular example for us in our neighborhood was, we dealt with several years ago, the issue of bus stops. And we were able to make some improvements in the neighborhood based on just shifting some bus stops out of the immediate residential district.
I have a question. I'm interested in, for a minute. Does anyone think that the state of Maryland Mass Transit Administration would obey a conditional use for where a bus stop is located? I'm not being faceti- Okay, so, I mean, I got, I, okay, that's what I thought, but I just had a couple stops in mind.
Right, and, and they, and I think they, they do have a process, but, all bus stops are not state now, too.
What?
And anymore all bus stops are not state transit administration bus stops, it's another-
Oh, I- We cannot hear you.
Can I understand?
This may be off, I don't know, this may not be on. I'm, I'm talking right into, I don't know if it's on or not.
So, it's just the, it's sort of like, this is bad anyway, this is why I like this room, and I want to go into Councilman James. We gotta deal with what we gotta deal with. If you could talk slower, you know what I mean, into, directly into the microphone, to, just try that.
Okay, can you, can you hear?
We can hear you say, "Can you hear?"
Yeah.
I don't know what I'm saying now, other than, "Can you hear?"
You're talking about, well, we don't know what you're saying. It's kind of good to hear you.
But, um, I just made, just based, bouncing off of your observation-
Yeah, the telephone.
I was saying, well nowadays, not all bus stops are state bus stops. So I don't know whether that makes any difference to your comment or not.
For example, like, like Hopkins. Well, they use them MTA stops, don't they?
Well, we have a circular there, and we are possibly having other things in the future. I don't know. And then there's the other thing, which is the car sharing thing, which might be, you might want to regulate where, or how people have the opportunity to weigh in on where it goes.
Thank you, it's totally noted and under consideration. What page am I on? Still on 116? Okay, now we are ready to go on pages 117, Open Space and Environmental Districts, line three to line 30. Any, any more colleagues? By the way, we are joined by Councilman Warren Bridge to my right. Thank you, Councilman. Anyone have any amendments?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. It's a minor amendment.
Everybody got a copy of this?
I've lost my sheets. I don't have a sheet, I don't have my sheet. Thanks. Mr. Chairman, I just have a, and a men-
Page 117, line 13?
Yeah. I can't find it, but I know what it is. Page 117, under, on line 12, lines 12 through 14, I would add "and private" to the sentence. So, "The purpose of the Open Space Zoning District is to enhance the quality of life for city residents by permanently preserving public and private open space, yada, yada." It, it just reflects what's said further on and what I think the intent is, and I just wanted to be upfront there. If I may.
Any questions, or amendments?
Mr. Chairman, the rest of my amendments in this Title VII relate to tables. I know that your, your approach has been to wait until we get to the tables, but I just want them submitted to the committee at this time, so that you can see the direction I'm going on in this Open Space title. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Will do. We're still on page 117. Okay, now we are on page 118, line one through line 36. Yes, Councilman Brad?
On page 118, lines 14 and 15, says, "The size, location, and design of all structures and lighting within public parks must be approved by the Director of the Department of Recreation and Parks." My question is, why? And, you know, is, why does it have to be the Director of Department of Recreation and Parks? I just don't know.
I, I get, I worry about those two lines myself.
I mean, nothing personal about any particular Director of Recreation and Parks. I just don't know that that makes sense. I mean, particularly when you have like a park like mine, where some lights are in the park because they're inside the park, others are like run through the middle of the park, but they're on the street, so they, you have a fight between, well, they're not our lights, they belong to the, they belong to BG&E, or they are by, in, you know, they're Department of Transportation. You know, it's like, whose lights are whose? And so if you have all the lights being approved by the Director of Rec and Parks, then we have one more person having to coordinate, it's just one more hand in the mix. So, and we already have enough problems trying to get lighting straightened out, why are we doing this?
The reason for it, and again, maybe it is redundant, because essentially it's saying that the property owner, if it's a public park, it is owned by the city by definition, and the director is the keeper of that property. But essentially, the intention was to say that that property owner must have overview of everything happening in that park. Maybe that's not necessary, because actually, you know, they, they have their own rules that would handle that, but the idea was to ensure the consistency and that there are occasions when there are leases or other types of agreements that might have some other entity using park property, and we wanted to ensure that the director ultimately could, had to oversee that. But Parks is here, like I said, if, if you don't want that there, it doesn't, there's no problem from our end on that.
Yeah, I prefer that we just delete it.
This is really a design piece, it's not.
I am looking for the section Jenny Landis for the Law Department.
Just hold it closer. And speaking.
Is this better? Jenny Landis for the Law Department. I wanted to say, this power may come from the Charter, and I'm looking now to see if it says directly that the Director of Parks and Rec would have control in this instance, so just wanted to-
Well, if they do, then they do, and we don't need to put this in there.
If they don't, that's fine. Like I said, maybe redundant.
Then my, my amendment would be to-
It indicated through the Director, excuse me, for our public parks. It may- It may be a way of indicating to the Director of Out of Decision that would be made on park property.
I can't, can't hear you.
Okay, why don't you move the mic up? Is it on somehow?
We've got to move closer to it. It's on, it's on, it's not a question of it being on.
I was, I was just indicating that perhaps it had to do with making note to the Director of the Department that a decision might be made, not necessarily having their approval. But in some cases, there are particular structures that the department uses on a department-wide basis for maintenance purposes, so they may use a certain type of light, they may use a certain type of bench, that they want to be consistent, because that's the way they maintain it, and they get the parts for those, so, and there may be a particular reason for why they use a particular structure.
Yeah, I don't, I'm moved to delete lines 13 to 15.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I'd say, it's Article VII, Section 67 of the Charter that I referred to.
They have--
Yep.
So, we have, so it's muted. Delete 13 through 15, right? Because it's in the Charter, so, okay. We're still on page 118.
Can you hear me?
I can always hear you, yes. Does she get permission to do that? Okay, we're still on, we're still on page 118. Okay, now we are on page 119. Page 119, line 1, temporary uses, down to line 31 with floodplain maps. Okay, Councilman Bridge?
All right, um, let's see, wait a minute. On, I guess the first one is on line 30, I think we have a change in the date on that, what is the, what is the new date for the maps?
I have to check the date.
Okay, but there is a change in the date on that--
We can look at the rest of the office, yes.
Okay.
We're reporting January, but this is not one of the things we get. It's still in the--
Yeah, we don't want to change it again between then, okay. All right, that was my only question with regard to this.
Anyone else on page 119?
For the record, based on Councilman Craft's comment on the date, I will have our new floodplain coordinator review the entire Subtitle III against the new FEMA required legislation to make sure there aren't other parts. So, I think we can work that out internally.
Thank you. We are now on page 120.
I think we've got to take us to 123.
So, this is from 120 to 123?
Yes, middle of 123.
So, I did have questions about the, so the floodplain districts will be, we'll look at the floodplain districts, make sure they match up and all of that, we'll look at the whole issue of 100-year floods and how that applies, okay. On page 121, lines 10 to 15 on the floodway, the only uses allowed in the floodway are the following recreation facilities, but not in, so if there are already uses in the floodway, they would be non-conforming uses, they would become non-conforming uses, and would the same rules apply to them if they were abandoned?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
One of those, one of those rules that a lot of it's out of--
Right, if they're not used--
--you use--
Exactly.
Okay, so, a flood out of places, let alone, you know, I was, basically, a lot of it's, is not the one, is it a ban for a certain period of time? Correct?
Yes.
The, the other thing is, going to page 122, on line 30 to 32, and this is variance and conditional uses tied to the floodplain, says, "Standards for substantial improvements or new constructions, all variances and conditional uses," this is line 19, "are subject to the following additional standards," and then it gets down to line 29, "adequate drainage is provided to reduce exposure to flood hazard," and, and this is where my question comes in, from 30 to 32, "the variance or conditional use is necessary because of extraordinary circumstances in local conditions that render the application of certain standards a severe hardship." So, we have extraordinary circumstances, so we have this adjective extraordinary, so we're not quite sure what constitutes extraordinary circumstances, I guess you know them when you see them, right? "But render the application of certain standards a severe hardship," so we have an adjective of certain standards, and the question is, what are those certain standards? So, I probably missed them somewhere, but can someone tell me what the application of those certain standards are? Because if we're going to render the application of them a severe hardship, then I'd like to know what they are, before we decide that the application of them is a severe hardship due to extraordinary circumstances?
I believe it could be any of the regulations, whether it's use or bulk, all would be standard or certain ones, so, the extraordinary circumstances may exempt you from a certain use prohibition or a certain building prohibition, but not necessarily saying you get all of the exemptions.
So, would this be the certain, the above standards, or is it all of the standards? Is it all the standards that would be used in order to comply with variances and conditional uses, or it would just be certain additional standards? Which are the standards to which the adjective certain applies?
I think certain is, could, certain, the lawyers should probably answer this, not me, but certain is intended to be that you're not getting a blanket waiver, you may get a variance on some, but not all of the above standards.
Well, this says, this is the variance or conditional use would be granted because the circumstances rendered the application of these certain standards, whichever these certain standards would be, a severe hardship. So, how do you determine which ones, which standards they are? I mean, I, you know, I'm confused.
Councilman Craft, I agree with your, understand your puzzle, and it might be that we have to work to define better certain, and it may be whether it's bulk use, whatever, so you know at least the generic standards to look for, that might have to be, but you can, I think this section will be written for things like the storm surge into the harbor that you might get from a hurricane, the collapsed street, something that might have to do with shifting of the turing or earth that would cause a particular property to have its character changed. But I think, I wrote down here the notes, we need to focus on that word, certain, it may be actually say where they are, or the standards that are, right, or refer to sections, you know, that standards in section X, you know, may be the ones that are, that could be changed as a result of the extraordinary circumstance, and that might be a better drafting, rather than use the vague word certain. So, I've written that down, and can work on coming up with some language.
Okay, and, yeah, I mean, here's, this whole issue of the floodplain and floodways and all this sort of thing with regard to flooding, and I don't know, and I don't know if this is a section or not, and Ms. Feinberg, maybe when we're talking about the floodplanes here, but, you know, we have what's defined as being in the floodplain, and then we have these areas that are consistently flooding, that we know always flood. For example, in my district, Caroline Street in Alisana, you know, it rains hard and you're under two feet of water, whatever. The other day, at Luzern and Fayette, I think it was Luzern and Fayette, don't hold me to that, but it was right up in that area, we had water backup, we had a car floating in, in there because of the water backup. And we're starting to have more and more of these places where we're getting this flooding on a regular basis, you know, we're going to have people coming in and asking us to modify land usage in those areas, and I think we're going to have to possibly look at what we can do in those usages that may have been approved in the past, we may no longer be able to approve anymore. You know, places where we built basements in the past, we may not be able to build basements again, you know, what are the, you know, what are standards or certain standards, and are, are there floodways, are there floodplanes, are there flooding areas that need to be defined as part of this section that's dealing with quote unquote floods because, you know, given--
Yeah, I think I understand the question and comment on that, and what I'd like to do is have our floodplain coordinator come in and explain the relationship between the maps and the FEMA requirements, and how they connect to both the zoning code and the natural resources code.
I got that part, but I'm talking about stuff that may be outside of the--
I think it's all covered there, you wouldn't want to, in addition--
Okay.
We are, our regulations that we just passed April, I want to say April 2nd, check the date on that, are stricter in some areas than what FEMA would require. For example, you recall the two-foot freeboard as opposed to the one foot. So, Baltimore City did go further in our entire disaster preparedness in doing that. All of that has happened since this was drafted, so we need to go back and, you know, review Title VII against what the council did last spring.
I don't know if we, I don't know if we have to make a distinction between floodplain and failing infrastructure. In some of those old areas, I think it isn't as much floodplain, which is a natural lay of the land, and the fact that our infrastructure is failing, especially in the older areas of East Baltimore. I mean, I have so much floodplain in my district, but it's a different reason than what I think you're experiencing on Luzern Street or Luzern Avenue, and, so I think, I don't know how we go about that. It is prone to flooding, but I think it's because of the infrastructure.
And the problem is, is that it's, it's highly, unfortunately, it's highly unlikely that we're going to fix that infrastructure before people decide they want to build something else there, so we need to be able to deal with prevent-- No, I understand that, and that's why I'm saying, we need to act outside, perhaps FEMA, because we have to, we have to live with the failed infrastructure, and we have to help people who don't know that the infrastructure's failing for making, you know, making decisions that might ultimately harm them, harm their property.
Right, I would feel more comfortable doing a briefing with our flood staff and possibly the folks from Public Works who deal with these issues together, to go get a more detailed briefing for the council on that interaction, it's not really zoning.
So, Laura, set that up with care, or we'll have a briefing, that takes care of you, it takes two years. There we are on page 123. Page 123, line one through line 33. So, Laura, when, when you, when you set that data, we're probably talking about 124, so the buffer and, and the critical area, is that--
The critical area is somewhat different, but, yeah, it may be a good idea to do those two together, because we bring in this, it's some different staff, some overlapping staff, so we can call it a floodplain and--
Critical area.
--critical area update, and that would be fine.
Thank you.
That would actually take us to, that would take us to the end of Title VII.
Yeah, you got questions, yeah?
What I was suggesting is that the, in order to answer the floodplain and Chesapeake Bay critical area questions--
I have a question.
That's not within the Chesapeake Bay critical area.
My call is not the Chesapeake Bay--
No, you said I need water. I said, I want a bottle of water and a seat.
Drinking water doesn't count.
I have a question.
So that we can have the proper staff to do more of a comprehensive briefing on those two environmental issues.
Thank you, Councilman Bridge?
Page 125, lines 16 to 18, this is on the significant development-- This is on the significant development in, actually in the whole thing, significant development. There is definition of significant development, which is in the housing code, dealing with the application of the green building code. And so, number one is consistency.
The reason this is, this definition is in Title VII, and this is a legislative reference question or comment really, versus in the definitions is we were advised because it only applies, it's a unique definition that comes to us from the state critical area and only applies to the critical area, legislative reference wanted that definition in the title to which it applies as opposed to the general.
Okay, so, is there some way that we could in here say, hey dummy, this definition only applies to the critical area so that you don't try to use it for something else? I don't mean literally those words, but, you know...
Yes, I think that would be, well, it might already be there enough. Look at page 123.
I understand, no...
Definitions, this all goes back to page 1...
No, I understand...
...because the definitions start there. It says, "In this subtitle, the following terms have the meanings indicated."
In this, I understand that.
I think if you wanna, that's where you put it, if you wanted to say more than that. Because it needs to be before the definition starts.
All I'm saying is sometimes somebody comes in and they look for significant development, they don't look back to page 123. They look here and see the word significant development, any development that would because they look somewhere for... And so all of a sudden, they see this definition of significant development and then they are dealing with the housing. All I wanna do is make sure that people know...
Okay, I don't know how to do that, maybe it's an asterisk back?
If you, on line nine, as Gunnison and I were talking, you could say significant development in a critical area.
That's fine.
Means.
Okay.
But to be, to be honest, you might need to do that for all the words?
That'd be fine.
You know, in other words, it's really, the definitions are B through H.
But adding that phrase would achieve the majority of what Counselor McCraft is trying to achieve.
That may be the only one that's, you're right, delineation, well, E, development may be needed in that too.
You're gonna, when your staff is doing an over look of this whole section...
Right, we could go through those 10 or so definitions and add that phrase, that's not a problem.
That would be great. And then my next question with regard to that is on lines, going back to lines 16 to 18, says involve an expenditure for improvements to the property equal to or greater than 50% of the assessed value of the property as certified by the Department of Planning. Department of Planning certifying values of property?
I believe, and I will just double check that again, I think the state gives us this authority on the critical area and I believe that is that, all we're doing is saying, you know, we look it up in the assessment and tell this critical area commission, this is what the city records say. We're not making it up, you know, I mean, but let me, let me get back to you on where the as certified, I mean, we're not doing assessments, obviously.
No, I...
We're looking it up in the city records and telling the state the number. But let me check on that one.
Okay, that's, I just want a clarification on that.
Right, that's fine. I'll just include that in the overall briefing on those flooding critical area.
Okay, and then on... Do we have, on line 31, line three, there, water use industries? Do we have a definition of what water use industries are? Says water dependent facilities include water use industries?
I don't think there's a separate definition. Again, this comes from the critical area law.
Okay, just curious as to what water use industries are?
The state is very strict on the term water dependent uses from our experience, so they don't mean, you know, your restaurant on the water is water dependent because it needs a view. That's not water dependent for the state purposes.
Right.
So, but I can get back to you on... Exactly. In other words, they need the water to do the boat, whether it's the manufacturing or the, yeah.
No, I understand, okay. No, that's what I think it means, I'm just wanting, okay.
Laura, just a question, I mean, does this have any effect on the Mizod? I'm just throwing it out there.
Uh, this section, yes, in that the Mizod is, anything in the Mizod by definition is also within the Chesapeake Bay critical area. So yes, from that perspective, but this doesn't change...
The Mizod.
The Mizod in itself or the land use, right.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else on 125? We're now on page 126, line 1 through line 35.
Again, one, sorry, line 1, page 126. Anybody, lines 1 through 35? Page 127, anybody on 127? Lines 1 through 35? Anybody on lines 128? Lines 1 through 35? Lines, okay, page 129? Okay, I have, and these are notes that I have from a community meeting, and I haven't read them since that community meeting, which was in the end of April, so I'm gonna try to remember what they meant. Lines 18 to 21 and 27 to 30, and 22 to 26, and 31 to 35. On page 129 are the same. The question was, consider the merger of the two.
Permitted and accessory, outside the buffer, then within the buffer, and then conditional outside and conditional within.
18 to 21, right? Conditional, I don't know why they had... Okay, that's why it was, they were the same, but one was for permitted and one was for conditional. No, the, what they are is the permitted and accessory uses outside the buffer in 18, 20, the 21, and the conditional uses outside the buffer. The definitions are exactly the same. And the question was, why couldn't you just say permitted, accessory, and conditional uses? And the same with, within the buffer?
Sure.
They're, you know, they're the same definitions. Why not put them all together?
I have no objection to that.
No, no problem, just to make it concise.
The other form of organization might be Mr. Rice's chair is to say uses outside the buffer, uses inside the buffer, and then you might be able to combine the language that way as well.
Okay.
Just by saying outside and inside and then have the definitions follow.
Okay, can we...
Work on that section.
Okay, can we work on cleaning that up, Ms. Feinberg?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
It usually depend on her to get the notes.
Okay, who's got the note? Who's got it?
I do, it says it's...
I got it too, okay. All right. Anything else on page 129? Page 130? Okay, on line 34? Okay, my question is this, it says intensely developed areas water dependent facilities within the buffer. If intensely developed, in intensely developed areas, water dependent facilities are allowed in the buffer only if all the following standards are met. And then says, lines 33 and 34, adverse effects on water quality and on fish, plant, and wildlife habitats are minimized and equivalent offsets have been made. Can you explain to me how equivalent offsets are made to, on adverse effects on fish, plant, and wildlife habitats?
There are areas throughout the critical area where, let's say, a pier is built for a boat that has to be there, and there were some grasses or, you know, wildlife areas and that was removed as a result. And another area adjacent or adjacent that had some natural effect was enlarged. So the developer would go in and increase the habitat in another section in exchange, it's like a swap.
Okay, but the fish or plant or wildlife habitat that is presently there...
Right, can be...
That can be destroyed and you can put a new one there. So what happens to the fish and wildlife and plant that were there, they're just gone?
Right, they may be gone and they're moved over there.
Pick them up in a goldfish bowl and move them. And put down a four caliber one in return for it, right? Three goldfish equals one 100-year trade.
As a member, as Baltimore City's, full disclosure here, representative on the state critical area commission, little known fact, I see these types of things on a monthly basis at that state critical area commission. So it happens all over the state.
They wouldn't let me have that job.
Buffer and replacement and that sort of thing. We're still in the critical area, this is also critical, yeah.
Oh, I know we're still in the critical area. My impression when we adopted all this to begin with was we were taking basically what the state made us take and we were pretty well adopting their language, is that right?
Uh, for the most part, we did customize for being more of an urban area than most of the, you know, the areas subject to the critical areas. And we're in really good standing with the state, I gotta tell you that, compared to other jurisdictions. So they're, they're pretty happy with what we're doing generally in critical area.
Oh, I'm so glad.
Yes.
The state thinks we're doing a good job.
I won't mention the counties that get mentioned every month in the legal reports there. It's not us.
Okay, we're now on page 131, line 1 through line 35. Okay, so when line 5, 7-412 became a use, it's 12 months consecutive rule, one F, page 131. Anyone have any, 131? Okay, page 132?
On lines 1 to 4, it says, "If the request for a conditional use or variance is based on conditions or circumstances that are the result of actions by the applicant, including the commencement of development activity before an application is filed, BMZA may consider that fact." Can we just put language in there that says that if you did it beforehand, right, and then you come in later and say, oops, I didn't know I was supposed, I wasn't supposed to do it, or, you know, or, I'm sorry, but give me the permit anyhow, or whatever? Can we just put something in there that says, if you do that, you can't get it?
Well, how about you have to take, you have to undo...
And you, or you have to take it down until you get permission to put it up?
But first of all, you have to...
I mean, the fact that it says they may consider that fact, you know, I mean, we, we need to make this mandatory, that that fact has to be considered and it has to be taken into account. You know, no, I wanted, I wanted to take the goddamn thing down, that's what I wanted to do, excuse me, that's what...
Well, I believe this is from a line of cases that say, you know, the applicant can't create the hardship that they complain about later, like can't be based on the activity. So you're saying you...
You can't kill your parents and then come in and say I'm an orphan.
Right, right.
No.
Yes, I understand, so you want the language to be stronger to reflect that instead of saying may?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a problem with that.
A related question, can we go to context here? I'm, I, what are we talking about? I mean, we're talking about variances in conditional uses inside a critical area, okay? So that's fine, and now we're... Now we're at... They're requesting it in, it's a critical area.
These are the conditions, considerations, presumption, and verbatim...
Request for, is based on conditions or are the result of actions? So if the applicant did something that caused him to need a conditional use or a variance? Oh, right, including he started building before he had a permit. All right, I mean, I'm just, I'm slow. Then, well, you guys got it, I just have, I just have to catch up. That the board met, it said that fact, and so what I'm saying is, if, if, if guys that, Gilgey's parents and now he's before someone because of the north... Okay, I can't think of an example of, I can't think of an example or would have used it, but he built something, he didn't have a permit, now they caught him... Now they caught him. Now he has to go before the board to seek a conditional use that he should have gotten to begin with. Right? Now, and then now you, I mean, basically, I, I'm interested in this, not that I have a critical area in my district, but that this is a basic, this is basic for not just here, but the whole code.
Yeah, here, here's, yeah, I mean, here's an example. This is one that, that happens all the time. If someone builds, um, an extension on their house, or they build a second floor, or they, uh, build a rooftop deck, or they, you know, uh, build out to their building, they build out to their property line or whatever, they do all those things which they, they may well be able to do if they go to BMZA and they follow the procedures. But what they do is they build it all first, and then all of a sudden, quote unquote, they say, "Oh, I didn't know that I needed to go to the BMZA," and then they go to the BMZA and they show them all these beautiful pictures of this addition that they built and they say, "Isn't this beautiful? Here are the bills. I spent $45,000 to do this. You can't make me take this down. I put a second mortgage on my house. I took my kid's college tuition. Now they can't go to school." You know, do all this. Please, please, please give me my variance. And everybody in the neighborhood is saying, you know, "We've been telling this guy for five years. He couldn't build this unless he went to the BMZA." Right? And there's 25 letters from the community association saying, "Don't build this without going to the BMZA." Right? This, the way this written is, is written, it says, "The BMZA may consider that fact." You know, what I'm saying is, you know, they better, uh, consider that fact. And in this instance, you could have where building on the water, where someone could build a pier. They could build all along the water. They could build up, you know, where you had, they could fill in wetlands. They could do all of those things. And then come back and say, "Oh, by the way, we need to go in and get these permits" after they've already poured in, you know, concrete and everything else, and there are no wetlands anymore. So that's my concern.
Well, how are you gonna finish the sentence? In other words?
Yes.
Let the lawyers reach.
If you're gonna rewrite this, which I hope that you will, first of all, you're, you're gonna change the "may" to "must" or "shall."
Yes.
Um, "shall consider that fact." I would hope that you would use stronger language than that. I mean, I watch them consider lots of facts all the time. Doesn't make a bit of difference, okay? So, um...
And I also wanted to point out, section three seems to say that there's actually a presumption of nonconformances. I assume that's referring to the actions of the applicant?
I gather so.
So that's pretty strong language in the rest of the section to say that there is a burden of proof then on the applicant if there are facts.
They must consider and take the presumption of nonconformance into account or something. And make them undo it. That's the biggest problem. I really don't care about fines, to tell you the truth. I got a guy built a garage, built a second story, oh, on Keswick Road, okay? He's, he, no permit. Um, he decided to take an old gas station that he owns and put a second floor on it. Well, oh, because he wanted to have something, I forget what he wanted up there, okay? And for, he couldn't have a second floor. He couldn't have that other use, all right? He built it anyway, and then he built a stairway up to it, which he attached to the row house adjacent. Now, he's been found in violation of everything. But the stairs are still attached to the row house, okay? Take them down. Re, re, make, remediate the damage done. But no, he's coming in now to the zoning board to have the, the second floor, which is for the gas station. Well, I think we've got that under control, but undo the damage is the most important thing. Thank you. Add it to the fine section.
Thank you, Councilman Clark. You and Councilor Craft hit the spot. Instead of, you know, let's be prevented. Can we be prevented? Instead of undoing, undoing it, can we put language in here saying that if you built it, you know what I mean? It's hot? Yeah, that if they build it, you know, if you say you got "may" consider the fact on line 4, and if you say "must," it just gives BMZA the opportunity to decision to say "may" or "must" do it. I think that it has to send a message to the developer that, hey, if you build this, it's gonna come down. You know what I mean? Is, is some way that that could be drafted?
Yes, definitely. We will work on that. And I do think it, it needs to be, um, changed to jive with the rest of that section, which is, seems to be stronger in creating a burden in any event on the applicant to overcome a presumption that doesn't seem to exist by part two that you're talking about. So we will work on that.
Because if you, I mean, if, if the teeth, if the teeth is, if the teeth is a fine of a thousand, two thousand, don't, don't pay the two thousand.
All right, so while you're doing this, most of us don't live in a critical area. Most of the constituents of this city. They're all critical. Yes, I know that. They're all critically important, but they are not officially designated because of their water to be critical areas. So while you're doing this, let's do it for the whole city, too.
I do believe this legal principle is applicable to the, to standing in general. I don't know exactly if, I can't tell you right now if it's in the code presently.
It is not.
Okay.
And it should be.
Okay, yes.
And that's why I'm asking this now, so that you can do this first and flip it over and fit it into
Same language.
The whole city.
Yes. Okay, I understand.
So continuing on the same page, on line 17 and 18. Same page, 132. On line 17 and 18, "We have had a continuing discussion throughout the bill to date with regard to the issue of standing. And we're continuing to work on that issue." And I raise that because it states, um, line 11 to 13, "With due regard for the person's experience, technical, blah, 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 blah." And testimony, "The findings may be based on evidence introduced and testimony presented by either..." And then you jump to line 17 and 18 and says, "Any other person considered appropriate by the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals." Who's appropriate? Who, I mean, no, if I'm on the BMZA, I may consider anybody in the city of Baltimore appropriate. Someone else may consider the people who live across the street appropriate. Someone else may only consider the person who lives next door appropriate. How do we define that?
Well, there are, of course, legal definitions for standing in court cases, and this does not jive with that at all because this leaves the discretion up to the BMZA.
Right.
Which I'm not sure.
One reason that the critical area section may be slightly different than other parts of the code on this matter is because it is the water and it's contiguous. It's not just like what's touching you. So it, it could be someone across the harbor that's more impacted because it's, it's.
And, and I've got no problem with that. I'm, I'm for, I'm for ex, in, what do you call it? Um, inclusive rather than exclusive, you know, is broader rather than narrower. So, you know, but again, you're leaving this where it just says, "Any person considered appropriate by the BMZA," that is...
I'm open to whatever we can do within legal bounds.
Technical question.
This gets me back to what I was talking about a minute ago. Is this stuff that the state makes us put into our code that we're raising?
If I have to report to you, that's why I started this in the beginning, saying we should do a special work session on these two sections. Though I'm in the upper division, I'm not as involved as her.
You know, though, whether or not that line was required by.
I could really resist that, of course.
Okay.
So that's why I want for this entire section to have a session on that.
Can we do that for our next hearing?
That's what I just suggested. Whether it's a special hearing, given that the next one's announced, I would suggest that we do it as a, maybe a special side hearing with that topic so that folks who are interested in that topic know it's covered. And that I can make sure, for the critical area, I need to make sure we have our three people on those areas and I can make sure that they have a couple of people that can be here.
Oh, can I just make it clear up something? I, I made a comment about this standing issue, but this, this really goes to testimony rather than standing in the case. So that really is discretionary with the fact finder. So it may, it may not be a problem because the fact finder can allow testimony from whomever they choose within reason. It is a discretionary matter, so.
Well, we do the, we have the briefing.
See, yeah.
We can bring it up and for you, but you just wanted to.
Just gonna agree with Maul Parvati. This is not about standing. This is about testimony. This is about testimony and the administrative body here accepting testimony. And they generally, if you were to try to tightly control who they could see hear testimony from, I think you're inviting litigation, instant litigation.
I'm sorry, what?
If, if you would try to too tightly control who they could hear testimony from, you're setting up a right of appeal almost instantly in every case. Well, then, that's why.
And he's very vague and, and arbitrary to say who the zoning board wants to hear from. They can just say, "Drop dead" to a whole bunch of neighborhood people that live within five inches of the place.
But, but, but I would be careful about trying to define classes of people of who all of the testimony is. There may be better language that you might be more comfortable with.
You could say.
Giving the authority.
It could be say something like this, "With due regard for the person's blah, 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 blah." "The findings may be based on evidence introduced and testimony presented by either the applicant, the city, or any other government agency, and then the other person, um, you know, of interest or, you know, interested in or, interested in or affected by the matter," or something like that. So that if you're, if you have an interest in it or you're affected by it, then you can testify rather than the person being considered appropriate by the BMZA.
If you're struggling with that word, we certainly can find other words that would.
Well, come, find a word that broadens it.
Get that word appropriate out. Well, you could make it very broad and just say they should allow testimony from anyone who signs up to testify. But, yeah. But it just depends on, we'll have to consider it a little bit further, but I understand.
Because this, this paragraph, I, this sentence, I think, was drafted to include expert testimony, uh, testimony of people who may want to talk about water quality, who are not anywhere near, but they could be anywhere, but they may have information and opinion that may be relevant to the decision. But if you're uncomfortable with the word appropriate, we can work on it.
Well, I mean, basically, I, I don't like anybody sitting in judgment, certainly not at a municipal zoning board, deciding who's appropriate to testify. They would never, I would never be allowed in the boardroom again. And I'm not the only one in this room that covers. I mean, this could be the end of my zoning board career. So I, and if I feel that way, which I do, I feel that way for a lot of other people that are exactly the kind of people that show up to protest things at the zoning board. Maybe so. Good thing Councilman Craft caught it. So let's get rid of all that. Well, here's the thing that what Laurie's...
What, what Laurie's concerned about is that, that David said, and that she might not be able to jive with all the right people.
I have to make sure I have the right people. I should take it back. I should not fight anybody. I don't want to do without my terrible people.
I have one question about the final page for today. Uh, on page 133, the, um, it says the line 25, "When the civil fine, the administrator may impose..." That's the state administrator, right? That's not anybody here local? The zoning administrator. Can we impose a fine of $10,000 locally? I thought the maximum fine we can impose in the city was a thousand bucks. Because if we can impose a civil fine of up to $10,000, I got a lot of amendments coming in. I need an answer to that question. Because there's a lot of developers gonna be paying a lot of money around here. Slum landlords, eh, dumpers. Line them up. That's right. In each day's a separate offense.
Yes, I was emailing the staff.
I just had a bill with this same issue in it the other day, and I, I'm getting confused now whether it was a thousand dollars or, but I, I think you may be correct, but I can't find it.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure the.
Unless, like you're saying, it does come, it is supposed to refer back to the state.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's a thousand, but if you can check it out. Thank you.
I don't know if it's charred or not. It may be charred.
Any other one page 133? We can also go on to 134 procedure. Page 134. Councilman Cr, uh, Clark, you have, uh?
No, 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 I have nothing, um, as with, um, title six, title seven, like you have, um, I can make changes in the, in the, in the changes, not in the terms, okay? I know you're not taking, you take over this time, but I did want to put this in the record and basically, I'm proposing that community managed open space, which is permitted in all districts, residential. Well, I'm sorry, I'm not sure it is. It's a permitted use. Comes with livestock and other such things. So basically, what I did was, I'm proposing to break it down into community managed open space inclusive, inclusive of sheep and goats and, you know, compost and food and, and sale stands. And which would be conditional Board of S, uh, uh, zoning board. And, um, then community managed open space, which would be a community garden, which would be permitted across. be permitted across the board. Now, that's a, that's going to be showing up in amendments to the tables, but I'm putting them in the record now, and I would like you to consider that if you would. And, and then the rest of my, it's just showing you the difference between, the difference is showing you what the current community managed open space permits. And I think it's just, it's the goats, I think, and the sheep. I, I just, I don't think they should move in next door. You don't know. You can have them in your floodplain. Also, I am submitting to the committee a...
Oh, I, I understand about, it's not that far long ago, but I don't want new ones without warning. I'm just saying, go to the zoning board, they'll grant it before somebody wakes up and has goats next door. I'm not reading this in, I'm handing it in, and I have already given it to the staff. This is a request for specific rezoning of properties in the Guilford Association, that part of Guilford in my district. It's not a title at all. It's, it's just like I have in the past lists of specific properties to be rezoned to specific things in my district. I'm doing that here for the public record, and then after that, and I'll be working with the planning department on getting the right designations, and then I'll bring them in in finished order. Thank you. They're map amendments, yeah.
Okay, our next, our next work session on City Council Bill twelve dash zero one five two, transform zoning, is Thursday, August twenty-eighth at ten a.m. in the Curran Room. At this work session, we will begin where we ended today on page one thirty-five, line one, Title eight, detached, semi-detached residential districts. I want to thank everyone for attending today's committee work session. Please check the area around you. You'll seem to make certain that you have every, everything that you brought with you. Thank you.